Good evening, everyone. It is January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Waverly. It is seven P. M. The Governor of Iowa has declared a public emergency because of the COVID nineteen outbreak. The mayor has determined that an in-person meeting of the City Council is impossible or impractical without violating the governor's mandates. When an in-person meeting is impossible or impractical, I have a code section twenty-one point eight permits a governmental body to conduct a meeting by electronic means. The meeting will be conducted by video conference using Zoom from the council chambers. The mayor and necessary staff, city staff will be in the council chambers. The seven council members will not be in the chambers but will participate via Zoom conferencing. Comments for items that are on the agenda or for the public hearing may be made by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the council members or by calling three one nine five nine six zero one seven nine during the meeting. The audio video conference of the meeting will be broadcast on normal public access channels. We will strive to maintain the quality of the video and audio during that broadcast. Public access is available through this broadcast. Meeting minutes will still be kept and will include a statement explaining why an in-person meeting was impossible or impractical. Carla, I'll call the meeting to order and request the roll call, please.
Both for his absent Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
Here.
Glazer.
Here.
Kangas.
Present.
Rafi.
Here.
And Schneider.
Here.
Thank you, Carla. I'll also welcome Gavin Goke as council person for the second week here.
Is he with us? Yes, thank you.
There he is.
Happy to be here.
With everybody, so. Thank you very much and thank you for our guests who've joined us as well. Item C is approval of the agenda as presented. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Any council discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Item D is the approval of the minutes of the January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the January four, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes.
A second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Glazer. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Item E is the public hearing. During this public hearing, individuals may make comments by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the council members or by calling three one nine five nine six zero one seven nine during the meeting. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on ordinance ten eighty-five and ordinance vacating and transferring cul-de-sacs Spiglass Hill and Pinehurst Point in Centennial Oaks Golf Club Edition in the Waverly Municipal Code. Have there been any written or oral comments, Carla?
There have not, your honor.
Thank you, ma'am. Any public comments as the hearing is now open? I give it a minute or so here just in case somebody calls in on the phone. Not hearing that. If anybody does call in, we'll allow them to to join us, but I will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and entertain a motion on this reading.
I will move to approve the first reading of ordinance ten eighty-five vacating and transferring cul-de-sacs Spiglass Hill and Pinehurst Point in Centennial Oaks Golf Club Edition in the Waverly Municipal Code.
Second.
Motion by Glazer, second by Bergen. Council discussion.
Yeah, I normally don't second guess myself very often, but I have some real reservations about this project. I'm really having a hard time understanding why the developer is not being required to construct the street in this development, just like every other developer would be. I understand the city's already been deeded the right away, but I really don't buy the argument that this makes it the city's responsibility to build the street. I also understand that the development of these lots will grow the tax base and the fixing the street will improve access to the subdivision, but this is a lot of money and I just don't see it's a very good use of city funds. If the street is really that dangerous in its current condition, then it really should be closed. At this point, I think that those comments are all moot because the development agreement's already passed, so it can't be revisited without suspending the rules and it passed five to two, so my vote against it really wouldn't have made any difference anyway. But I just wanted to put my thoughts and and concerns about this project on the record and I know that the ordinance that we are voting on tonight or on the first reading is basically to complete the development agreement. And since we've already passed the development agreement, it doesn't make any sense not to continue on and pass the ordinance, but I just wanted to go on record that I have some real reservations about this and if I were able to turn back the clock, I think I probably would have voted no.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I suppose I would like to. How do I say it? Agree with Rod in some principle. I voted for this and I would vote for it again, but I do have problems with the way it went through. It seems as though when we voted on it, we were of the impression it was the first of three votes and that we would have an opportunity to hear from more of our constituents. Now, I have heard from a lot of constituents since that vote. A lot of people who are in disagreement about the way that came out and I think Rod did a very good job of expressing a lot of the concerns that people have had. I wouldn't change my vote. You know, I think that's good for the city and it's good for the community and it's good for the tax base, but I am not real excited about the way it was presented by city staff. I think that there are lots of people who accuse the city of kind of backroom deals and while I don't think that's what happened here, I think that the optics for it are not good. So I think that there's a lot of people who will see how that process was handled and will be accusing the city of favoritism or, you know, some sort of backroom shenanigans. I don't think that's what happened, but I think the optics are not good and I think the city staff should do well in the future, be more upfront about the decisions that are being made ahead of time.
Anything further?
I'll just say that I I think both Rod and Brian have good comments and I I would agree basically with what Brian said. I think that that I've said before that I think we need to have more, what, consistent interactions with developers, more transparency, and I think for economic development in general, we need more of a menu for entrepreneurs and developers to come to the city and ask for, you know, what is available or to have it more transparent, but I have heard from a few citizens who feel like certain developers are given favoritism, et cetera. Now, I think it's it's up to each developer to come to the city and say, hey, I would like to do this. What assistance might you be able to offer me? But I I agree that I think there needs to be. It needed to come before us in a different manner and I think it was confusing about whether we would have further opportunities to discuss it.
Anything else?
I think I have to really say something at this point. During the last meeting, I think it became clear to me that there was some confusion and I tried to clear up that confusion before that vote was taken. I believe my my comments were that we really needed to know whether the whether the project was going to be approved in order to move forward with all the other steps. And I think the agenda memo was clear and made that clear. I tried to clear up what seemed to be some confusion at the time, but I maybe I didn't get it as clear as I could have done it at that time. We need to know if this was a project going forward before we could move to the stage that we're we're doing now. And that's that's why it was presented the way it was.
I suspect that everyone's gonna vote and no one's gonna be really happy, no matter what. It's one of those types of situations that it is what it is and hopefully we roll on and and we, you know, as we know, this has been quite some time ago that this has been baked in, so. Hopefully, we move on from this.
All right, any last comments before we vote here? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Schneider.
No.
On a vote of five to one with one absent, the first reading of ordinance ten eighty-five is approved. Item F is the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item one is approve the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-one Chrysler seven passenger minivan from Stu Hansen Dodge City of Urbendale, Iowa for the amount of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Item two is set the public hearing date to review the Cedar River Park bid package two ball field installation and paving project plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P. M. In the council chambers of City Hall. Item three is pay request from Snyder and Associates for the Fourth Street Southwest and Tenth Street Southwest Reconstruction, two thousand and twenty, for the amount of fifty thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Item four is pay request from WHKS and Company for the Third Street Southeast Bridge Removal for the amount of four hundred and five dollars and twenty-eight cents. Item five is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the Old WPC Dome Demolition, two thousand and twenty, for the amount of six hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. Item six is a pay request from Lurkura Engineering Company for the Airport Runway Twenty-Nine Extension, two thousand and eighteen, for the amount of two thousand seven hundred dollars. Item seven is a pay request from Farnsworth Group Incorporated for the Public Services Center North Edition, two thousand and twenty-one, for the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. And item eight is Class C Liquor License for Casa Robles. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Rafi, second by Drinkow. Any council discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Item G is regular business resolution. Item number one is resolution twenty-one dash zero eight. A resolution approving change order number one to the owner occupied rehabilitation contract for project number two of the Waverly CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-one dash zero eight approving change order number one to the owner occupied rehabilitation contract for project number two of the Waverly CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program for an increase of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. I hand this over to Ms. Rose Phillips. If she has any comments about this, what these change orders are in effect for, just for our public viewers.
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're pretty common for these projects. I mean, once once a contractor gets working on something, it becomes apparent that some, you know, maybe they need a to custom order something or something's in worse shape than they thought. So this is to replace a couple of things that are that are in bad shape and, you know, wouldn't necessarily, you know, might fall apart if they were just reinstalled.
Any questions for Ms. Phillips or comments?
Are we gonna be able to do this program again next year or is this pretty much a one-time thing?
Well, it's a, I mean, it's a single grant. It, so it started in two thousand and nineteen and it's a three-year grant, so it will go through two thousand and twenty-two. We do have six, six owners pre-qualified. If if an order drops out or something, then there might be an opportunity to serve someone else or if there's if there's money left over after serving six.
Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash zero eight is approved. One additional note with those expenditures through the CDBG, those are not local tax dollars that are going out to those programs or grant funds. Item two is resolution twenty-one dash zero nine, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for the two thousand and twenty-one vehicle bridge inspections. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-one dash zero nine approving a professional service agreement with WHKS and Company for the two thousand and twenty-one vehicle bridge inspections on an hourly not to exceed fee of six thousand fifty dollars, including expenses.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Council discussion.
Just out of curiosity, what kinds of things do they look at when they're doing these inspections?
Well, they're they're looking at the structural integrity of of the bridge. Looking to make sure that the the critical members are in sound condition and and if they are deteriorating, kind of trying to anticipate, are they, or are they actually running calculations to to see if it affects the load capacity? And then they're also identifying if there's, you know, maybe whether the city ought to be considering scheduling a replacement, maybe in the next three to five years. So we look at what you would typically think of wide-span culverts. Anything greater than twenty feet in length or width, regardless of how many sections there are. So like along the Dry Run Creek, we have a lot of triple twelve-by-sevens, which means that they're three, three tubes, twelve feet wide, seven feet tall. And then we're obviously looking at bridges. Anything, you know, all the way up to our eight hundred and twenty-foot-long Cedar River Parkway Bridge.
So I'm looking at the map that is on page two that has the various bridges that we're going to be inspecting, kind of targeted on there, and I don't see the bridge on Twelfth Street Southeast included there.
Yeah, the the map is is mislabeled. It's it's actually showing the the old bridge that went up and over the the rail trail. If you're on the rail trail, that's just a large diameter culvert at this point. The bridge is actually about five, six hundred, five hundred to six hundred feet off of Bremer Avenue, just south of the entrance going into CMI.
Okay, so so that yellow target is actually referring to that bridge on Twelfth Street Southeast, not the cross over the rail trail.
Yeah, so this is a, was a snapshot off of an interactive DOT bridge map on our website. So you're you're capturing everything within the city limits, but you're also seeing some things that are are outside of the city limits as well as like the Highway Three Bridge over the Cedar River is the DOT's responsibility, so. We'll we'll see about reaching out to the DOT to get the map corrected so it accurately shows the location of the bridge on Twelfth Street Southeast.
Okay, thank you.
And Mike, I had a question on that, on the DOT bridges. This is just the city bridges. The DOT ones, are those done as well to your knowledge and all those sync up and when do we learn about that stuff? I mean, obviously, we're affected and we got this Bremer situation to deal with on that bridge.
So I, off the top of my head, I I cannot tell you the website, but the DOT does have an interactive map and so that you can pan around the entire state. I don't know if it's like forty-some thousand bridges that are are on there and you can zoom in like on Waverly and you can click on any one of these dots and it will give you the the structural bridge report for that and every structure is done every other year.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I remember we're also talking about bridge inspections along the Waverly Rail Trail. I'm assuming this is unrelated to that upcoming expense.
We we do those structures every four years and and those are not required by by the federal or state agencies, only the vehicle bridges.
Okay, so so this resolution is unrelated to discussion of the bridges along the rail trail?
We inspected those two years ago and did that report, so there are some some maintenance items that were identified in that report from almost two years ago now that that we need to look at, at addressing to make sure that we're we're extending and preserving the life of those structures for as long as possible.
Anything further? Hearing none, I'll entertain a vote, Carla.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash zero nine is approved. Item three is resolution twenty-one dash ten, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Cresco Building Service for the Public Services Center North Edition, two thousand and twenty-one project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-one dash ten. Approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Cresco Building Service of Cresco, Iowa for the Public Services Center North Edition, two thousand and twenty-one project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Council discussion. No discussion. Then we'll go to a roll call, vote, Carla.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash ten is approved. Item four is resolution twenty-one dash eleven, a resolution approving the purchase of builder's risk insurance for the Public Services Center North Edition, two thousand and twenty-one project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-one dash eleven, approving the purchase of builder's risk insurance from the Cincinnati Insurance Companies for the Public Services Center North Edition, two thousand and twenty-one project for the quoted price of four thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Second.
Motion by Rafi, second by Bergen. Council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash eleven is approved. Item five is resolution twenty-one dash twelve, a resolution approving an agreement for material inspection and testing services with Chosen Valley Testing for the Public Services Center North Edition, two thousand and twenty-one project. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution twenty-one dash twelve, approving an agreement for material inspection and testing services with Chosen Valley Testing of Waterloo, Iowa for the Public Services Center North Edition, two thousand and twenty-one project for an estimated cost of eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Drinkow. Any council discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Rafi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash twelve is approved. Item six is resolution twenty-one dash thirteen, a resolution accepting the cemetery building project as complete, approving pay application number five and approving pay application retainage as the final pay request. Entertain a motion.
I would move approval of resolution twenty-one thirteen, accepting the cemetery building project as complete. Approving pay application number five in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents and approving pay application retainage in the amount of seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty cents as the final pay request to Steggy Construction of Waverly, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Bergen. Motion by Kengas, second by Bergen, council discussion, please, if any.
Just wondering, yeah, are they pleased with the building? That was my only question.
Yep, so far so good. Cemetery is loving it so far, trying to get everything set up, make sure everything fits how they thought. And yeah, so far they are really enjoying it. So once we get, you know, into the spring and get seasonals in and all that, it'll be a lot nicer for moving equipment in and out.
And I haven't heard of any complaints from the neighbors to the south, so that's good.
Nope.
Good.
They're a quiet community.
That's good. Nothing further for the good of the cause, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, Resolution 21-13 is approved. On item number seven, which is the third and final reading of Ordinance 1086, an ordinance repealing and replacing Waverly Municipal's Code, Chapter 102, flood plain management. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the third and final reading of Ordinance 1086 and ordinance repealing and replacing Waverly Municipal Code's Chapter 102, flood plain management.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen, council discussion if any. Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, the third and final reading of Ordinance 1086 is approved. Onto item number eight is the review of the fiscal year 2020 city Waverly audit by Chad Reineer from Williams and Company PC. Turn this over to James and Jess.
Yes, sir, Council Mayor, we're going to have Chad from Williams and Company kind of walk us through some key points of the audit and express any concerns there may be. Overall, we're pleased with the end result. It's a lot of work that goes into this and doing it remotely was a little more of a challenge this year as well. Normally we'd wrap this up at the end of the calendar year, but it just is very difficult to try and get all this hammered out via phone, email, et cetera. So I appreciate Chad jumping off this tonight. And if you have any questions at the end, please feel free to ask. Hopefully you have a copy of this available through your split screen or in person. So if you would, Chad.
Yeah, so like what James said, that we did all of our audits remote this year. So that was a little unique, some challenging parts. We worked through it going forward. And we're really hoping to be in person. I foresee that we will be. But, you know, I also think that this kind of taught us that we, there are some things that we could get done remotely, you know, before we actually go for field work. And so hopefully kind of working through this whole remote audit this year, it did create some efficiencies for the future, even though I think some inefficiencies were created in the short term. We'll just kind of walk through some of the audit here. On the first page, so page number one, it'd be page number four of the PDF. I'll just kind of go with the page number of the actual report. That way, if any of you have it printed off. This is a letter of transmittal. Essentially, it just gives management an opportunity to kind of talk about what's happening within the city, you know, various aspects of what's going on. Page, page six is the GFOA certificate of achievement for our excellence in financial reporting. So the city received this regarding the fiscal year 2019 audit. We just submitted the FY '20 audit for a GFOA review today. And I fully expect for the city to get this award again for FY '20. There are very few comments that they had for review from the 2019 audit. And we've made those changes. So I foresee receiving this award next year as well. Page eight is our audit opinion that we basically, you know, we don't audit the hospital or Waverly utilities, but they are included as a component unit of the city. And that is stated in the first paragraph under the auditor's responsibility. We're making reference to those auditors. Page nine, we say in our opinion and then based on our audit and the reports of other auditors, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. So right there is the unmodified or the clean opinion that you guys want. So you did receive the clean opinion, which is always, you know, a good thing there. Then starting on page 11 is a management discussion analysis that there's a lot of good information here that, you know, this is only, the MDNA is only a few pages long. The full report is, you know, 100 plus pages that if you don't have time to look at the whole report, I would suggest looking at the MDNA because there's a lot of good comparative information and explanation on why things change from this year to last year. Then starting on page 21 is the government-wide financial statements. So this is a full accrual financial statements, 10,000 foot level. Can't make any management decisions from this report. Basically, this is a good report to kind of compare the city with, you know, other cities, the same size of Waverly and kind of compare, kind of shows you everything that you own and everything that you owe. Next two pages is the income statement of the full accrual report. Again, can't make any management decisions, but this is just at the full accrual level. Page 24 is the start of the balance sheet for the major funds that every fund in this report or every fund in the city is somewhere in this report. The smaller ones are towards the back, the larger, more significant funds are shown in the front. Now, one thing that we always kind of like to point out is take a look at the unassigned fund balance in the general fund, which is 3.7 million. And when you divide that into the number of days, that's the general fund expenditures, which is on page 27. So general fund had a total of 6.3 million in expenditures. When you divide that into the unassigned fund balance, the city had 217 days in unassigned fund balance. So what that means is that at June 30, if the city did not receive or the general fund did not receive any more money, that they could operate for 217 days without needing additional funds, which is a very strong, strong position. Last year was 183 days. But then in 2018, I saw it was at 210 days. And so, so last year you dipped down a little bit, but now you've basically have refilled those, that reserve. So that's really good to see there. Then on page, let's see here, page 30 is the start of the utility fund financial statements. You have the balance sheet and then the income statement and in cash flow statement to follow. Starting on page 38 is the notes to the financial statements. A lot of detail here that if you really want to dig into the weeds of any of the numbers that are on the financial statements, this is where you would go. Kind of skip quite a few pages here then. Get to the end of the notes. So then starting on page 73 is the budget schedule, the actual, the actual compared to the budget. And as you can see that for expenditures, you guys were not over budget in any function. So that's, that's good to see. No, no issues there. Kind of skip some of this. Okay, then started on page 84 is the non-major fund level statements. So this is where, where all the smaller funds show up here in the back. And the total is shown as one column in the front, but right here is the detail of all that information. Then starting on page 105 is the stat section that, there's roughly 20 different tables and, you know, charts that show a 10-year trend analysis. And that's part of the GFOA certificate that you guys apply for, that you have to have these. And again, this, you know, takes a little bit of time to put together. So I like to, you know, have a shout out to Jess and James for getting this information put together because there, it does take quite a bit of time and a good, you know, time investment to get this all put together. And let's see here. Then on page 136 is the schedule of expenditures, federal awards. And so I know the last two years, you guys have not needed what's called a single audit that essentially if the city expends more than $750,000 in federal grant money, then required to have a single audit. And this year you had expenditures just shy of 1.2 million. And we only had a look at one, one program and that would have been all the airport grants. So just because of all the work that was done out there and FA grants, we had to take a look at that grant. No issues there. Everything was, was good. Then page 137 is just stating that we, we don't test the internal controls, but we have to gain an understanding of the internal controls. And that's essentially what this report is stating is that we gain an understanding. Then page 139 is, I said, you know, testing internal controls except for the grant, the federal grant that we tested. And so then this is saying that we, you know, looked at everything and looked at that grant and in everything, everything looked good there. Then page 100, starting at 141 is just the, the schedule of findings. Nothing too major there. And then I think that that's pretty much, pretty much it. Is there any questions there?
So on page nine, there was the emphasis of a matter which was referring to Note 21, which was something about employee benefits being charged to the wrong account. Is that just a, hey, notice this and fix it for next time?
It, so yeah, what happened was that, because I think it was either last year or a year before, it kind of got changed. All, all it was, was just an allocation between funds that beforehand, the, for accrued wages, so, you know, wages that were earned in July or excuse me, in June, but was paid out in, in July, that before all those were paid out of the general fund and the employee benefit fund would just make a transfer to the general fund since you levy the property taxes to pay that. Then there was a change, either like I said, it was either last year or a year before, where now those expenses are actually being paid out of the employee benefit fund. So that transfer isn't needed or at least not as much needed for, for that employee benefit. And, and so then since that change, we, last year, the employee benefit of those accrued wages was recorded in the general fund when they should have been recorded in the employee benefit fund. And so essentially it was just an allocation between funds. So once we kind of dug into it a little bit closer, we, we realized that now expenses are being paid out of the employee benefit fund versus the transfer being done.
So basically, oh, you did this wrong and we'll do it fine in the future and that's all it is?
Yeah, that's all it is, that we even say that our opinion isn't affected by it. So it's just, yeah, like it's just an emphasis match, a little, just to kind of make it stand out a little bit.
Thank you.
Chad, you said we, we got 217 days of cash on hand. What's the range you see out there? And on the bad side, I guess, is what I'm wondering how, how bad people operate.
Well, yeah, you guys are very good that we typically like to see at a minimum of 90 days. Usually we say 90 days to 180 days. What, what we like to see is like if, so you get your big property tax receipt in September, around there, that, that's kind of what we go by is that when you, how long could you operate until you got that next big property tax receipt from the county? And so like I said, typically we're at 90 to 180 days. You know, there's, you guys are, you know, getting up there, but yeah, I don't think there's even an issue, you know, where you guys are at now. It's just a nice, healthy reserve.
We'll fix it. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, James.
You're okay, man. We will fix that this year, unfortunately, but.
But don't be a hurry.
Look at with fund balance, we have a 25% minimum fund balance, 90 days, very similar patterns. We have to make payroll for the first quarter when there's no money coming in, so to speak. And so anything after that is really true fund balance. And my idea is to have another 5% to 10%, 30, 35%. When we get beyond that, we do start to look at one-time expenses to kind of bring that, rein that back in. And we're looking at a kind of a difficult budget this year overall. And so we will use some of that to rein back in some of that expense and bring it back down to that 25, 30% range.
And then on the material weaknesses on the, on the last page, I know we see this every year. Make sure I understand this. We have cash accounting or accrual. Is that the overlap essentially?
Yeah, yep. Yep. So basically if you have one journal entry, then you get this finding. And nobody's perfect. And, you know, we, as a firm, we probably have like 75 audits, roughly that. You know, I could probably count, I probably need less than one hand. I probably need, you know, two fingers to count the number of clients that don't have that, that finding. And it's probably more likely that we just didn't find it. Because there's, there's times that, that most clients that I'm thinking of, yeah, we, we might have a journal entry and that year, like I said, we just, we ended up finding it. And, and just like I said, because no, nobody's perfect. So it's like almost every one of our audit clients has that finding.
And I like to bring that up because, you know, it's material weakness. And, you know, I want to make sure we explain that to the public that it's not, it's, it's, you know, I, I think, you know, this is opinion here, you know, public finance is a, is a whole big weakness. You know, it's frustrating as council to look at public financials because they really don't tell you, you know, I can't open up the city financials and say, hey, we could really be in trouble in 20 years because I can't tell you if, you know, the sewer system under Fourth Street is going to blow up or if we're going to have a tornado on the West End. So we don't know any of those liabilities in the future. That's, that's really, you know, frustrating for council. And we also don't know any of the assets in the future either. But, you know, I think one of the things we can do as council is we can understand those future liabilities the best we possibly can. And as a community, we can, we can add value or add assets to the community. So anyway, I'm, I'm sorry to, to just bag on your entire profession, but that's, it is a, it's not like, you know, businesses, you know, we look at balance sheet for businesses and we can instantly place a value on them. We can't do that with city financials. At least I can. If there's a method, please tell me.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely correct. The governmental accounting is just a beast, beast of its own. And the normal person out there, normal citizen probably would have a difficult time looking at this and understanding exactly what it's saying. But that's, that's, you know, what the standards have out there and obviously that's what we have to go with.
Thanks, Chad.
Any other questions for Chad while we have him on retainer this evening?
I just wanted to, I wanted to thank the city staff because I know how much of a pain this is to go through an audit. I've done it myself. I've been on both ends of it. So I know how much work goes into it. So I really appreciate that you guys are doing your best every day in and day out to put things in the right buckets and all of the standards. And so I appreciate that. And so I appreciate that.
Yeah, it wasn't the the best one for for Jess to go through the the very first one, having to do it all remote. But but it'll it'll be better next year, I promise.
All right.
I'm would just add that I'm glad that we're able to do this remote, because in past years, and Carlo knows this, this is usually the night that we end up with a nice ice storm. And they have to drive in from La Mar's and try to get the way all the way back. So we can do it remotely, and it makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, I do appreciate that, because I remember I got home at midnight one one time, because I had to just go a little bit slower, and it's about three and a half hour drive on good roads.
Excellent, thank you for your diligence there, Chad. Thanks again to the city staff that endured that process as well, so. All right, move forward with item number nine on the agenda, review of the council policies and procedures. I'll hand this over to James.
Yes, sir, we normally don't put this on until every other year. And the chance that there's any change at council. But with the last year that we've experienced, we want to provide an opportunity for council to make any possible recommendations, changes, or any shift in how we operate based on the pandemic we've been through, so that we can have that maybe corrected or functioning better as we go forward the next year, as this hopefully tails out. But in case there's other issues that do arise, we would be then able to address it appropriately with our own procedures. So there isn't anything specific staff has based on this. It was to give you an opportunity to discuss anything you'd like, or make any changes. Or if you simply don't have any, we'll move on. But we just want to provide the opportunity based on the past twelve months.
I myself, from my seat, didn't have anything, just to put that on the record.
Well, I don't have anything that's specifically related to our Zoom meetings, but I do have two items as I was reading through here that I would like to bring up. The first is rather technical, so I'm 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 not sure if this is that big a deal. But under twenty or two point twenty, suspension of rules of procedure, it requires a majority vote of the council to suspend the rules. And I guess I, normally, that would be a supermajority. So we'd be looking at maybe five votes to suspend the rules, primarily just so that it 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 takes the consent of a supermajority of the council people to forego all of the rules and procedures that we voted on previously. In other words, it has to be something that everyone can pretty much agree on, that we we need to make a change on. It it's nothing that's come up since I've been on the council, so it's probably not something that's really all that necessary. But as long as we were opening the door to these items, that's that's maybe one suggestion I would make, that we change that to a, that the the rules would be suspended by a vote of five members of the council. The other thing, and I've been thinking about this for a while, is 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 probably a little bit more consequential. And that is having to do with the function and the structure of the council comments at the end of the at the meeting. I think they can be much more productive and actually have a purpose if we follow through on on what we have in other segments of the the procedures. The only place in the procedures that I could find, and and I admit I did not do a very thorough investigation on this, where it mentions the purpose of the the council comments, is in the section two point sixteen, dealing with citizen complaints, grievances, and recommendations to council. And number one, paragraph number one is talking about a situation where a citizen speaks to a council member about a concern. And then the council member may then present the issue directly to the full council during the mayor and council member comments portion of the next meeting. And if a majority of the council or the mayor is of the opinion that the issue should receive further attention, then the city administrator may be directed to investigate the issue further and report back to the council at the next meeting. What what this makes it sound like is that the purpose of the the council comments is to basically talk about things that have come up, either generated by the council member themselves or or by citizens that that have contacted them, to see if there is any interest in the council pursuing that issue further. And give you an example, I got an email about a week or so ago, I think several others did too, about having special parking permits for residents in the downtown area. And that might be something that we want to consider as a council. That's probably something that one of us would bring up at a council comments. We could discuss as a council, decide whether we wanted James to look into it, see what other cities did, if there were pros and cons of doing this, but something that we needed to put on the agenda for a further council meeting. We've also had other situations where where people that made suggestions about something. Giving another example is my suggestion about having a crossing light, pedestrian crossing light on the parkway between the baseball diamonds and and soccer complex. That might be something we would bring up in the council comments, have a short discussion, see if it was the the sense of the council that we wanted James to to look into it and and report back to us the next time. So I I think that's a real function we could do with these council comments. So what I've done is made up a short list of some things that I would like to see put into our rules and procedures about the council comments. Primarily, the council comments members should be limited to, number one, present to the full council issues or concerns voiced by citizens as provided in section two point sixteen, paragraph one, or advanced by the member, which the council may then direct the city administrator to investigate and report back to the council the next meeting. Number two, to recognition of individuals, groups, or organizations that are deserving of special mention. And number three, to provide the general public with information or events or activities taking place in the city that are of special note. And all council member comments should be limited to no more than two minutes, and the mayor may enforce this rule as appropriate. What I want to get away from is where the council comments section are basically used as a as a platform for discussing things that are not in front of the council, and really are not things that are currently part of the business of the council session. I think it it really takes a lot of everyone's time to do that, and I think it diminishes our work as a council members. So I I would put that forward for discussion to see if anyone thinks that any of those ideas are 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 worthy of pursuing.
I would definitely thank you, Rod, for your input and observations. I would definitely agree with you on the two point two zero suspension of rules and procedures. Changing that to a supermajority seems like a good idea, instead of just a simple majority. With regard to the council comments at the end, I'm less excited about trying to impose rules on how that is used or enforced. I definitely think some people use the city council comments in different ways. But I'm not really excited, I mean, we may want to put some kind of a time limit on them. I think, I don't know if two minutes is the length we want. I mean, we have a limit on public comments, and maybe it should be tied into that value. I don't know if that's also a two-minute limit or not. But I'm I'm not really excited about trying to regulate that part of the meeting too much.
Yeah, I think if you regulate the council comments too much, you essentially move the council member into the position, and we've had this before, where the council member steps down from the dais and steps forward in the public forum and speaks on the public forum. So, yeah, you know, as a member of the public, they have that right. I I guess I would prefer it to stay within the council minutes where there's a little more prerogative to to speak, whether it's a community issue or personal. One that they want to bring, something that they want to push, but I'm trying to to regulate it, I'm worried about. As far as the suspension of rules, I believe under Robert's Rules of Order, that's typically, it is simply a majority vote to suspend the rules, which can lead to total chaos, if you've been involved in other political events where they have decided to suspend the rules, and suddenly now we don't have any rules. And leads us into into further issues, but then allows for a majority rule to adopt new rules at that point as well. So just kind of my own experience with that.
Yeah, I'd like to ask some of the senior counsel here on telephonic participation. And I, you know, we did away with that, I guess, at one point, and, you know, obviously, I'm looking at that again. So if we get back into the chamber, we have situations where someone is sick, we can phone in. I'm just wondering, was there a reason that we went away from that or changed that? Or is a reason we would not want to look at that again?
I don't know per se on that. I think from a telephonic standpoint, you're not necessarily able to, again, is one of the things we've experienced with Zoom, necessarily read facial reactions or interactions from council or public when they're giving public input. It's harder to get a read on some things, maybe you don't necessarily hear things as much. Now, having experienced Zoom for almost a year, and the technology changes, perhaps it is something to consider revisiting. I still am a little worried about allowing for voting and participation in that sense, without being present if unless we're in a group Zoom situation like we are now. Just on the the not wanting to end up with, you know, council members constantly phoning it in, I guess would be the terminology, I guess, term, or zooming it in. I don't know, just that's a new phrase, phraseology that we would have to go with. But that that would be my concern, that it is still meant to be a gathering of all of the officials and voting in person as a group, as a council, as opposed to, I know I've in the past have been able to watch online the stream and either text, usually text, but or call in with that ability, not necessarily to vote, but at least to participate in some discussions when they're we're there, or at least listen to what the discussion's going on. I guess that's that's my input would be, I I still would be worried about allowing voting remotely.
My thought on that ability under emergency circumstances would be, you know, to entertain the suspension of the rules, to allow under extraordinary circumstances that vote to be had. Looking at Robert's Rules here in the dais, just on the the reference to suspending the rules, obviously, the motion and then the requires a second, may neither be amended nor be abated, and requires a two-thirds vote. So if you wanted to amend the the council procedures to reflect what Robert's Rules say, it would be two-thirds, which in our case is narrowly a supermajority, as Mr. Drinkow is referred to.
Well, let me say just two things. First of all, as far as telephonic participation, and my concern there is that people are just going, that I don't want people to literally phone it in, and I'm afraid that that might happen. I think that when you become a member of the council and you're representing the people of the city, you really have a responsibility to show up to the meetings personally, so that you have the same, you receive the same inputs and have have the same perspective as the other council members at the same time that they're doing it. I'm not a big fan of doing these Zoom meetings. Frankly, I would much, much rather be in person. I think it's a much more effective council meeting. But in an emergency situation, obviously, we have to do that. But I'm I'm not at all in favor of, I mean, the rules now allow telephonic participation. They simply don't allow people to vote over the telephone, if I recall correctly. I think that that's probably an appropriate way of doing it. The second comment I have is I I I really would like to hear some feedback with some of the other members about using the the council comments section, where we can discuss things that have come up, either from citizens or or on our own. Since we can't do that outside of council meetings because of the open meetings law, that typically, this is the only time when some of those issues can be discussed as a group. Other than that, other than just funneling them all through James, and and, you know, he can disseminate them. You know, reading that direction in the the council procedures, that this is one of the ways for citizens to actually provide some kind of input to the council. And and we discuss that input at the council comments section. I think that's an appropriate use of the council comments section. We haven't done that in the past. And and I guess I I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good use of council comments. But if the rest of you feel otherwise, I, you know, willing to go along with that.
The the only concern that I I can see with that is with our open meetings and requiring to to post an agenda when we get, you know, too far enveloped into a particular item that should have been an agenda item. That's the only concern that I would have with that. But I, believe me, I I wish there was a conforming to Iowa code where there was an open opportunity for us to discuss everything and anything, don't get me wrong. But I don't know as if that exists.
Well, you know, we we've had situations before where we've had citizens that have come at the open comments section and asked a question or or made a recommendation. And, you know, we all sit at at the dais like lumps on a log, because we're not able to actually respond to them. We're not able to answer their question or to discuss their idea because of, you know, it wasn't on the agenda. This might give us the opportunity to say, hey, we think this is something that should be placed on the agenda, so that we can have it properly discussed at a meeting with it on the agenda. I think if you read that section in section two point sixteen, paragraph one, I think that's what it's intending. And if we're not going to use it that way, then maybe we should change, you know, section two point sixteen dash paragraph one. Because that basically directs us to discuss those items during the council comments section.
Yeah, I'm kind of in a, I I appreciate what Rod has brought forward, and I I also agree with Brian. I don't know that I would want to totally give up the council comment section for some miscellaneous things that just need to be said, you know, the thank yous, the the general comments. But at the same time, as I read this, I'm thinking, I don't feel like right now there's a good way to move forward, something that I'd like to have talked about, you know. And the and the example you gave Rod was, you know, the citizen looking for some parking opportunities downtown. And and that would have, you know, if it doesn't seem like there's a formal way, I I know how it reads here, but we don't do that in the meeting where somebody brings something forward, and there's a way for the majority of the council to say, yes, we need to talk about that in in future meetings. Can we get that on the agenda? I've, since I've been here, I've never seen that happen in the council comments. So doesn't seem like it's formalized in a way that you could do that. And maybe there's a way that we can still balance where we can still have open comments. But at the same time, if there's something that we need to bring forward that is a citizen suggestion, complaint, grievance, that we have a a method to do that, where you can get the majority of the council to say, yes, that's something we want to talk about in the future.
I think it's a really good idea to use the comments section, like Chris was saying, to introduce a topic. We don't have to discuss it, we don't have to debate it. But if there's interest in exploring it, whether it's a topic for a study session or a topic that we might want to see as a resolution, I I think it's a great idea to actually use that paragraph and and formalize how we discuss things. The other thing I think it would help with is, it's really hard to know what other council people are hearing about from citizens. You know, sometimes citizens will email the whole group. You know, sometimes citizens will email the whole group. Sometimes they just do an at large member and their council person. They might just do the council person that covers downtown. I didn't get an email about parking downtown, so sometimes that's the only way we're going to know that that certain citizens have an issue. Um, and especially since we're not all meeting in chambers where sometimes you'll have those conversations before or after a meeting. I think it would be great to formalize that, then it's transparent. The public can see it as part of the the minutes or the the uh video or the audio that they're watching to see that, okay. My my issue or someone else's issue was brought forward and people want to explore it, or there might be a lack of interest. And and, you know, there isn't a consensus during the comments section that it's something we want to proceed with. I think that's, I think that's a great idea.
I'll save a comment regarding what Ann was just talking about for council comments this this evening. Does it have value?
I I did want to speak just briefly about the the telephonic participation, um and I'm gonna. Call on my personal experience as a college professor. It is great to teach a classroom full of people. It is fine to teach um an online course where everyone is on Zoom. It is an unmitigated uh disaster to try to teach half your students in class and half your students on uh Zoom. Um, so. Right now, while we are all on Zoom, I think this is a good solution. When we are all in person, I think we should encourage everyone to be in person. The notion of some people being in person and some people calling in on telephone, I do not think is a tenable solution, and I would really discourage us from trying to. Make that. Uh, the norm or eating just it it, I almost want to say acceptable, because if we're all on Zoom, Zoom is a great solution. But as soon as some of us are in one form and some of us are another form, uh it's really not very efficient for holding meetings.
Unfortunately, you know, Zoom has that capability. You wouldn't be able to be seen, but you can still call in and and interact and you're on the same platform. I think Mr. Kanga took advantage of that at one opportunity. Um, and so those those options exist, but I think. You know, having more discussion about this, uh maybe it does go on uh just by a a showing of of hands or whatever. Does this warrant coming on the agenda um after we get through budget? Yay, nay? At three, okay? So I got uh, you know, two that would like to see it at minimum, uh we can discuss it again um. At that time, so, all right, anything further before we move on? I really appreciate the conversation about it, and I appreciate James putting it up there um for reconsideration just with the everything that was going on. Um, item number ten is approval of the mayoral appointments. Entertain a motion?
I would move approval of the following mayoral appointments. Ron Stalberg and Kathy McClung are reappointed to municipal housing commission for terms ending January second. Twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion make Angus second by Rathy, any council discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Follows the same sign, motion carries. Item H is reports from boards and commissions. Item number one is the Bremer Waverly Law Board minutes of December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Item two is the monthly financials for December twenty twenty, both received into the record. Staff updates, I know we've got at least one thing. Mr. Brown?
Uh, yes, sir. I know Garrett is a brief update for us, and uh beyond that, I'm not sure if we have any additional, so if you would, Garrett.
Yep, thank you. Um, I just wanted to uh let everyone know that uh for the second year in a row. Uh, we are a finalist for the uh Healthy Hometown Powered by Walmart Award. Um, that's through the uh Waverly Area Partnership for Healthy Living, otherwise known as Waffle Group, uh which I am a part of. Um, if you remember, last year we did actually win one of those awards and were awarded the uh five thousand dollar prize, which is going towards uh the mural downtown. Um, so we are a finalist for that again. Uh, that will be announced virtually uh on February eighteenth. So hopefully after that, uh I have some good news for you. Um, and just a a a brief update of some of the things that were on. Uh, the application uh dealing from the city side, uh, you know, that helped us become a finalist are the completion of streetscape. Uh, the enhancements that we did to the disc golf course, uh the collaboration with the Prairie Park neighborhood uh on building that shelter and the basketball and pickleball courts. Uh, community garden enhancements and the trail extensions uh along the Cedar River Parkway. So um heavily loaded with uh some city projects, so we're looking forward to uh hearing that announcement. Uh, the other thing that I've got is to let everyone know that we now have a certified arborist uh as part of the leisure services staff. Uh, Eric Shares is the vegetation management lead, and uh last month, uh he completed his work, uh passed the test and is. Now a certified arborist, so it's a big addition to have him uh, you know, on to have that certification on board in the vegetation management uh division. That's all I've got for you tonight.
Thank you, Garrett. Thank you, James. Thank you to all the rest of the city staff for their work that they do. Um, city council comments, just going to go ahead and start at my top left, which is Mr. Bergen.
Um, yeah, I wanted to have a little story time. Today is Martin Luther King Junior holiday. And I wanted to uh tell you about a story in Waverly's past that I heard about. Um, in nineteen fifty-five. There was an air force captain by the name of Virgil Daniels. Um, he was African American. He lived in Waterloo. And he and his family wanted to move to Waverly. And they were moving into apartments and some of the neighbors found out and they complained. They complained to the owner. And there were six of them who were upset about a black family moving into their apartment complex. And they complained to the owner and the owner to a agreed and then, you know, the family decided that they weren't going to move because they didn't feel welcome. Well, some of the residents of that apartment found out that this had happened, and they came up with their own petition. Saying that they wanted that family to move and they wanted them to be welcome. And there were some over thirty neighbors who signed that petition saying they wanted them to move in. And as a result, that family did move in. And in fact, Waverly, Iowa was featured in the ninth, April nineteen fifty-five Life Magazine. Talking about how we welcomed this uh family to our community, and we actually won a a national grant because of it. So. What this tells me about Waverly's history is we have a great history of standing up to injustice when we see it. When we see racial injustice, Waverly has a history of calling it out and saying that is not welcome here. But I will also say that we can do better. Um, it should not be the responsibility of our minority community members. To be on the front lines. They shouldn't have to experience that discrimination before we rise to their defense. I would say Waverly has a great defense, but we need a better offense. We need to be need to be more proactive about. Seeing an end to racial injustice. Um, I think that our diversity and uh human dignity task or commission. Is a great step in that direction, and I want to encourage members of our community to volunteer to serve on that commission. To help us be proactive um in our actions about standing up and putting an end to racial discrimination. So that's my two cents.
Thank you very much for sharing that um morsel of our history. It's a a very important piece um to. Our backbone of what we are here, and I I think you speak a lot of truths when you say that that has set us as a baseline of what we're known as, so. Um, next up is Mr. Dranko.
That's a great, great story, Ryan. I will have wherever I had, that's uh something I think is very, very significant for us to discuss history. I want to use my mouthful on that and then I want to uh kind of bring bring forward what I write a rock pile out with the working downtown and I uh would would like like to write write that to uh. James to see if there's something we can do about downtown parking and 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 email. I will, I will, I will take it as we sleep, take a look at it and bring back that council, that's something we, if you feel something that we need to look at or on on agenda. Other than that, I I know any other comments. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Your devilish undertone is back, just so you're aware on your audio. All right, um, Mr. Schneider is up next.
Uh, just a couple of quick things, um, and I think everyone received an email from uh resident uh Mr. Denner on uh thirty-nine street coming off of um. Bremer Avenue or Highway Three out there, I guess, and I've seen that so many times and 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 council, really, if we we're not aware of this, please take a moment and. Um, it's um, it's one of those places if you, when you, when that happens to you, it's high, it, for me, it's high anxiety and um. And the reason is it's dangerous and um, you know, you have those cars whipping around you like that, and then you realize, wow, that's a high speed rear end potential there. And high speed rear end potential, high speed rear end crashes are, there's, that's not a good situation. Um, and then also we've got, you know, this thing, same kind of, well, different kind of thing at Cedar River Parkway in three. And then, you know, as we were talking last week, we've got this situation with the manual uniform traffic control devices, and we've got the paint situation. So as you can see, it starts to build a narrative that I think that we need to pull uh someone from the DOT here. I. You know, I'll be, let me be frank. This looks like pure DOT neglect to me. You know, you've got strung out construction. Um, bridges here and there, the business community is in total disarray from from what I believe is a mess at the DOT. And unfortunately, our citizens are bearing the cost of that. Our businesses are bearing the cost of that. It looks like mismanagement, quite honestly, at the DOT. So I, you know, I'm I'm confident and I'm optimistic because we've got a new director at the DOT. We've got a new year, and I think eventually we'll have uh an environment where uh businesses will be a little more welcome in that environment, so. But it is a safety issue, I think, all throughout, not just uh what Mr. Dinner mentioned, so hopefully council will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mr. Glazer.
I just wanted to uh thank the Waverly businesses and individuals that are donating to uh the Cedar River Park. Um, I see those come across Facebook now and again, and I've been forwarding them, and I it just, it it dawns on me just how many people and businesses are supporting. Um, the ball fields that we're putting together, um and so I really appreciate the support um that the community is is gathering around this project, so thank you.
Yes, and a special shout out to Mr. Lagnier with his volunteerism as the chair of the task force for leading that campaign charge, so um. Doesn't go unrecognized. Uh, next up is uh Ms. Rathy.
Um, thank you. Uh, so Martin Luther King Day is now known as the Day of Service, and I think people have mentioned great examples of the volunteerism in Waverly and. Um, we're lucky to live in a community where people invest both with their time and their talents to help it make be a better place. One of those organizations that is trying to make a bit of a comeback is Trees Forever. Um, the leisure services staff have done a great job of. Getting some of us together to talk about trees once a month. Um, there's information on the leisure services website about how people can get involved. Um, and even if you can't come to the meeting, we're going to be having some projects um this spring with tree planting that people are welcome to volunteer for. Um, there's also a tree sale going right on right now from the Science Club, and there's information, there will be some information displayed in local businesses about that as well as uh on the city's website. So I would direct people to that to think about spring and planting some trees. Thank you.
It would be nice if everyone could plant a tree.
Just leave it alone.
Correct, that's right. Um, I'll move to our guest council member before my mayor pro tem, Mr. Goki. Any comments on this second of three meetings and?
Um, I really appreciated uh Mr. Brilliant's story. I thought it was really nice. Um, I think our community does a wonderful job of. Uh, representing and making members of various like especially LGBT communities and various racial minorities. We do a pretty good job of. Making them feel welcome, but we obviously could always feel or we could always do better. I think that especially with the. Uh, diversity, I not not task force, I forgot the word that you used for it, but. Commission, thank you. That's a wonderful step, but I would definitely like to see it grow and for more people to be involved with it.
Absolutely, there's always room for improvement in every faction of our life and and our community, so thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Kengas.
Hit the unmute button, right? Figured I'd know that by now. I'm branch out on some of those trees discussion. No. Um, I interpret Rod's warbling. I think he was talking about the parking downtown. Was that what you mentioned, bringing that up? So I I agree. This brings bring that up. It was really difficult to hear that one, um, but um, no, I'm I'm good otherwise. Thank you.
Excellent. I'll try to make it quick here. Um, we're hopeful that the summer will turn around for us and we can, you know, have a a very prosperous and fun filled heritage days. Uh, so they've got a lot of their events already posted on their Facebook page. Uh, one event that's coming up, uh kind of put it out there as a save the date right now is the. Color Run Walk Five K on April twenty-fourth, so those that are runners and those like me that would be walkers, um baby jog here a little bit. Put that on your calendar to participate in that. Um, in respect to uh Martin Luther King Junior Day today and Day of Service. I just wanted to take a moment to reflect on my meeting uh yesterday morning. Um, I went down to Waterloo. And met up with uh Anna Marie Weems. Uh, those of you that may or may not know her from the the Waterloo area, she is a a member of. The Civil Rights Commission in Waterloo, and she's been a very um wonderful advocate for um. You know, civil rights justice and and a lot of different things, and she actually was pivotal in inviting um. Dr. Martin Luther King Junior to the Cedar Valley back in nineteen fifty-nine and actually um had him at her house. Um, amongst all the meetings and went down to, I believe it was Davenport with them and and uh kind of showed him around and and all those types of things. And the the time that I spent with her was what I thought was the most amazing piece of the whole thing was when I talked to her and she said, let's meet on. First, we were going to meet on Thursday. It didn't work and with weather and stuff, so anyway, decided on Sunday, and I said, where where do you want to meet at? And she said. Well, I I can get us a room at at City Hall. I said, wonderful, that that works, you know, down at down at Waterloo. And uh, so I go down to to the city hall and and I'm waiting outside and she calls me and she goes, well, I'm inside. Um, they've got us a room, and so I go inside and. Some of you are familiar with City Hall down there. On the north end is City Hall, and on the south end is the Police Department, and so I go in, I'm like. City Hall is open on Sunday, you know, what is going on here? And uh, just the overwhelming response and interaction that she had. With the um police officers that were there that opened up the police department for us to go in and use a meeting room in the police department of of all places when we think of. lots of different, you know, problems between injustices with law enforcement and everything. It was just a really warming feeling that we can have a discussion on racial issues, diversity issues in that venue. It was just a really ironic thing that was very meaningful to the two of us at the end of the day. We actually both, you know, commented on the fact that she's got these really great working relationships with those individuals. And it just really reflected very, very positive. So she has some, some interest in meeting with our task force in the future. I know that she has met with and shared her stories and stuff with high school students here. She's 94 years old. I would like to think that she's got a lot of life in her yet, as much gusto as she has. But I want to take advantage of that. She's a very good wealth of knowledge out there. And so it was just a fortunate situation that I was able to be put into, to speak with her, just in an open conversation. So other than that, I don't have anything further. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose the same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.